You're on somebody's.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, David.
You got David's computer?
No.
That is Sean.
He's probably listening, guys.
You know, I don't care, David, that's David's computer.
Not yet.
I will zoom, log into the Zoom right away, but while I'm doing that, who do we have online? Oh, okay, so.
We do.
We have four. Four, so it's four of us, me and the boys. Typical. I need a motion to amend the agenda, so we're make the, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. So we are going to amend it by deleting eight point two, the CAO evaluation. That is going to get moved to next Tuesday and in its place will add eight point two council self-evaluation. It'll be in camera with Ryan. And with that change, I need a motion.
Like that.
All right, councillor Broadhead, all those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Can you let me know if somebody logs on? Okay, thanks. And then we have the minutes from way back in December, the 12th. Anyone see any errors or omissions? Mike, you want to make a motion?
Uh, move on to to adopt the standing committee of the whole meeting minutes of December 12th, 23 be adopted as presented.
Thank you so much, all those in favor. That's carried unanimously. All right, we're straight into the DARP prioritization. Great report, and it looks like Craig is going to take us through it, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Herron, uh, let me just share my screen here. Okay, perfect. Well, good morning, committee members. Today's presentation is going to summarize an evaluation of initiatives recommended within and supplemental to the downtown area redevelopment plan from a priority-based best practice return on investment perspective. This exercise, of course, is one of several priority projects referenced within the council strategic plan listed in a listed under the category of downtown vibrancy. And before I get going, just want to thank Sean as well as the small army of subject matter experts that are joining us on the call today to take some of the tough questions. Appreciate everyone being here and all the support in this project.
Just want Irish pubs.
I've thrown him off his game.
Sorry, Craig. So to outline my presentation, I'll first go over some background, then discuss the project methodology, go into some discussion, and then highlight administrations, conclusions, and recommendations. And the purpose of the presentation today, it's really just to inform the committee of our findings and to have some informal discussion about downtown synergies. What we're not looking for today is direction to proceed or not with any particular project. We're not looking to re-rank priorities and so forth. This is simply a tool today. And furthermore, it's a tool based upon a snapshot in time when the report was submitted since priorities, timelines, and other factors are often changing. So jumping into the background, area redevelopment plans guide future growth within existing built-up areas. They provide fairly high-level 15,000-foot type guidance, so they aren't, they aren't meant to be overly prescriptive, yet they are more detailed than our MDP, which of course provides even broader 30,000-foot type guidance. So St. Albert's Downtown Area Redevelopment Plan, or DARP, was approved back in 2010, and it referenced 28 strategic initiatives for the city to consider, some of them bigger, some of them smaller, many of them completed over the years, others underway right now, and others not started yet. And among other matters, these strategic initiatives pertain to technical studies, capital projects, development regulations, and more. Attachment one in your report shows all of them in detail. So with that background, the aim of this project is to help answer the question, which of the original 28 initiatives and maybe a few new supplemental ones can now be most timely, affordable, and impactful in order to create more favorable market conditions and reignite interest in downtown St. Albert from developers, businesses, and customers? So in terms of the project methodology, I'll start off by acknowledging there was no perfect way to do this. We attempted to apply a broad multidisciplinary lens, seeking input from 11 city departments as we went about the following five-phase methodology. So first of all, we sought to just simply, 14 years after it was approved, just confirm the interpretation and present the status of all 28 initiatives referenced within the DARP. We then undertook a jurisdictional scan and literature review to learn from successes of comparable municipalities. And then based on that research, contemplate supplemental initiatives to consider. And then based on that research, contemplate supplemental initiatives to consider. Um, we then commissioned a traffic impact assessment to determine the implications of fully implementing DARP's vision. And then assess administrations consensus and scoring and uh, trying to score them consistently as well. So the next few slides will now allow elaborate a little bit further. So as I mentioned, uh, Mayor Heron, phase one of the project was simply confirming the interpretation and status of all twenty-eight DARP initiatives. And as of today, uh, it's roughly a third, a third, and a third in terms of which initiatives are completed, underway, or not started yet. Uh, we'll come back to these in a few slides, but uh, attachment two of the report also details these further. Phase two, uh, so this second phase of the project explored general trends and best practices around the kinds of downtown initiatives employed by other Canadian municipalities. Uh, so these twelve on the screen here, uh, were in Alberta, while another eight were from elsewhere across the country. And none of these are perfect comparators per se, but uh, these municipalities were deemed to be at least somewhat comparable to St. Albert uh, in terms of either their population, their socioeconomics, uh, being suburban, so they may be uh, competing with a larger uh, neighbor uh, and or they're designated one of Canada's best small cities. And to supplement that jurisdictional scan, professional development activities and a literature review were also undertaken with all learnings given due consideration and incorporated into the report wherever practical. And as a generalization, I would just say that the second phase of the project, it really just confirmed that old adage that says the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. Uh, yet at the same time, the research also acknowledged the financial impracticalities of implementing that whole all at the same time. Uh, furthermore, it demonstrated that there is no silver bullet proven to spark downtown investment overnight. That said, several common best practices did emerge. And in no particular order, some of these included revising land use by law regulations, uh, particularly around topics like parking, sidewalk patios, density bonusing, enabling more mixed uses in downtown contexts, and so forth. Various kinds of beautification measures, such as streetscape improvements, pedestrianization, public art, civic plazas and parks, and similar projects or programming which provide four-season experiences. Uh, many, uh, but not all of the municipalities had a general philosophy that kind of said, if you build the residential, the businesses will come. And the municipalities that did uh, hold to that philosophy, uh, emphasized providing various housing forms which cater to multi-generational mixed-income clientele. Uh, various municipalities had all sorts of development incentives and grants. Um, a lot of them partnered with their local business community through business improvement associations, uh, selling or leasing city land in exchange for some kind of win-win. And there were also a lot of downtown transit hubs and uh, public parking structures um, uh, across the country as well. So that's the quick paraphrase version. Uh, the complete summary can be found in attachment three, which goes into a lot more detail about what municipalities across the country are experimenting with. So based upon that previous stage and all all that um, learning we did, five new supplemental initiatives, so these are ones that weren't in DARP back in twenty-ten. Uh, they were also deemed worthy of analysis and throwing into the mix. So these include introducing a business improvement area. Uh, this first one, of course, was recently approved by council already. Exploring offering development incentives. Uh, this topic is currently being explored by our economic development department. A review of downtown transit servicing. A revisiting an old study uh, regarding proposed L R T station locations. Uh, this one was really just an attempt to think outside of the DARP box, uh, with a bit of a no idea is a dumb idea philosophy. And uh, creating a brand-new DARP, um, uh, what, when is it time? So we threw all these into the matrix uh, for uh, administrative discussion and scoring. Onto phase four, the traffic impact assessment. So this anticipated where and when downtown redevelopment would most likely occur. And after running some models and crunching the numbers, ultimately, it concluded that the existing transportation network can accommodate the future population unemployment growth expected to occur over the next couple of decades, with only minor improvements required. Uh, that said, it may require tempered expectations of what is considered acceptable traffic in a downtown context, especially as that growth reaches kind of the upper threshold. Uh, but I would submit committee members that as a byproduct of a vibrant downtown, a a bit of traffic may be considered an acceptable trade-off. Um, put another way, if downtown traffic was a bit busier, uh, it's probably a sign that things are going well. Um, but that's still many years away, and when we get there, uh, the T I A shows us how to address that. Uh, the conclusion section of the T I A has been provided as attachment four of your report. Finally, onto phase five of the project. So this saw interdepartmental, interdepartmental, excuse me, input from administration and then using our best collective judgment, we assigned points to each of the the initiative using established prioritization methodology uh, from our financial and strategic services department. So that was the methodology. Um, on this next slide, where we're going to slow down now and and spend some time here as this slide kind of summarizes the whole project in in graphical form. And what I'm going to do here is um, go over the twenty-eight original initiatives from within DARP as well as those five potential new ones that we discussed a few slides ago. Uh, you can see here on the uh, Y-axis, it shows the level of importance from zero to thirty points. And then on the X-axis, uh, the progression of the initiative. So it's not started yet, it's underway right now, or it's done. And so in summary, um, eleven initiatives have already been deemed completed, um, or something equivalent to them has been completed. And therefore, they require no further action nor analysis at this time. So these include uh, the equivalent to a a design review panel. We have a consultant that that does that. Um, the downtown parking and traffic study that I just discussed, uh, a civic and community facility strategy, a downtown approaches study, servicing and stormwater, uh, the Saint Anne Street promenade, uh, expansion of the art gallery, uh, the new um, Red Willow Senior Center, uh, the library project, uh, DARP monitoring, uh, you'll recall, uh, about a year ago, uh, brought forward some amendments to DARP. And then just a few weeks ago, the uh, implementation of the business improvement area. So this leaves twenty-two initiatives for more in-depth evaluation. Uh, sixteen of them, which I'll illustrate in orange in a second here, are considered to be the lowest ranking priorities for the time being, uh, but should be revisited again in the future. So to clarify, these orange ones that we're going to see, they're not no's, they're just probably not right now based upon what we know today. Um, and due to the fact that we can't do everything all at the same time. Furthermore, more explored, more exploration is needed for some of these. So um, in the underway bucket with uh, between eight to fourteen points, whi- which is a relatively low score when you consider you could have up to thirty, include things like the community revitalization levy. Uh, this is uh, technically underway, uh, but only in the sense that we've begun talking about it. Uh, but upon meeting with the government of Alberta, we understand that their eligibility criteria for this program may be changing. Uh, so we've hit pause on this for now, which is why this scored relatively low for the time being.
Are you going to go into that further later, Craig?
Eligible can, um, we could talk about it now if you like, or we.
I could.
Get into more.
I'll ask. I'll, I'm ready to.
Perfect. Uh, signage and wayfinding. Um, the city has implemented various signage and wayfinding initiatives over the years. Uh, there's a few, um, uh, arguably, we we haven't fully done yet. Uh, DARP had spoken a lot about gateway signage, you know, more prominent um, hints that you're entering downtown St. Albert, uh, that we could perhaps explore a little bit further. Um, as well as Cardinal Walk is underway. Um, the Millennium Park design right now is implementing as much as possible of the original vision for Cardinal Walk within the existing scope and budget um, of the Millennium Park project.
Craig, Car- Cardinal Walk is through the spruce forest part behind the.
Uh, Cardinal Walk is essentially, um.
Of course.
Between St. Albert Place and the provincial law court, uh, essentially next step, a pedestrianized extension of St. Thomas Street between us and the courthouse linking into Millennium Park. So um, i- in speaking with Recreation and Parks, given the the current scope and budget um, assigned to Millennium Park, they're right now working on incorporating as much as possible of that with consideration to some of the site constraints. For example, the parking lot is actually owned by the province. Um, so there are some, uh, there are some limitations.
Okay.
But uh, it's underway in the sense that it is being, the 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 principles of it are being attempted to be incorporated to the best of.
Yeah.
Uh, park's ability.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Um, oh, I'm getting ahead of myself. So those are the low-ranking yet underway initiatives. If we go over to the left, uh, scoring even lower in the six to eight-point range, and yet in the not-started-yet uh, bucket, we see things like the the civic plaza um, in front of St. Albert Place, uh, creating a brand-new DARP, miscellaneous improvements to some of the uh, downtown roads, a city hall annex building that was envisioned back in twenty-ten, a public parking structure, and some s- some form of a redevelopment levy. Also in the not-started-yet column, but uh, scoring a little bit higher include a review of downtown transit servicing, uh, what DARP called a community enhancement fund and revisiting that L R T alignment study. So this leaves only six remaining initiatives, which I'll illustrate in a second in green. And these are the ones deemed most worthy of consideration in the near-term future. And the good news is uh, most of them are already underway. And these include uh, scoring between sixteen and eighteen points, um, development partnerships. So to elaborate, this entails collaborating with other parties to develop certain downtown properties currently owned by the city, which may be unnecessary for future corporate needs. So we're talking properties uh, such as twenty-two St. Thomas Street, uh, the former fire station uh, site number, or former fire station number one site. Uh, one day perhaps others like the central parking lot um, across from us here, and and maybe others. Uh, the public art strategy, community services is working on a number of items which overlap with what DARP originally envisioned for this one. Uh, development incentives, so this is also underway, currently being explored by economic development with recommendations likely coming later this year or early into twenty-twenty-five. Scoring a bit higher still, um, still in the underway column is the detailed design for Millennium Park. Um, as you're aware, a proposed borrowing bylaw is coming before council shortly for this one, which if approved would shift that uh, from the underway column over to the completed column.
Do you want us to hold questions, Craig, or?
Uh, my preference would be to hold it, uh, but if if you would like to, I I'm I'm completely open. Um.
Uh, maybe, maybe we'll try it because we're here now.
We see of.
So one, one of the questions I have is the miscellaneous improvements to St. Thomas uh, Tashi Perron, Saint Apple.
Why don't we wait? That one's like, there's a whole list of projects. I was going to propose we actually put some of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
As a, because I've got question on those different projects.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. Good. But just heads up, I'm going to ask that question.
Okay.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Um, so that was the design of Millennium Park being underway. Uh, then with the twenty-eight points, uh, was the land use by law update, um, as a next step, council approval uh, will be required uh, later this year. And and I'll maybe just stop for a sec to clarify that the fact that the land use by law scored twenty-eight points doesn't necessarily mean it's more important than a Millennium Park or a public art or any of these other things. Uh, the the criteria that we used as administration to score these things was quite complex, and it it considered, um, you know, how far in we already are, what's funded, uh, what's the low-hanging fruit? Um, so from those types of factors, the land use by law uh, scored quite a bit higher, but it's, you know, to take all of this with a grain of salt. Well, one thing I don't want to get into is to say, well, why is this twenty-two and that one sixteen? You know, it's, th- this shows relative degree of importance. Um, and like I said at the start, there's no perfect way to score these things, but relatively speaking, I hope this gives uh, the committee a a general idea about the kinds of um, things that are the most strategic right now. So with that being said, um, also scoring twenty-two points uh, is the construction of Millennium Park. And as I said, that's in the not-started column, as of course, it's just pending the detailed design to wrap up and the associated uh, borrowing bylaw. So this is our synopsis of where administration believes things land, again, relatively speaking, uh, based upon what we know today. Uh, we will come back to this graphic shortly. But at this point, I just wanted to reiterate again that DARP is a high-level strategic plan um, for the downtown. It's not intended to be overly prescriptive. In other words, all these projects you see on the screen, you know, the original ones from twenty-ten, as well as some of the new ones we've, we've thrown in. I- it's not necessarily imperative that every single project and every single DARP policy be be implemented verbatim as originally contemplated back in twenty-ten.
You pause for one there, Greg.
Yeah.
Maybe more of a question for you, Bill. So most of the underways are, sorry, most of the greens are underway. Except for one. Um, I'm licking more of the stuff in red. Council has an opportunity if they wanted to push one of them forward, right? So we can ask questions about specific projects right away, but I'm just wondering, Mr. Fletcher, if let's say I really, really wanted to look at the community enhancement fund. Do you need motions? Do you need uh, conversation committee at the whole?
Conversation committee of the whole, and I think uh, part of that conversation would stem back to what we talked about over the last couple of days.
Yeah, probably not today, but.
Else give, what gives to enable that?
Okay. Sorry, Craig.
No, that's, that's okay. And and yeah, I mean, they're, all of the initiatives within DARP are are good ideas. It's uh, this just recognizes, you know, what are the quick wins? What has the highest um, return on investment potential based upon what we know today? Uh, so to wrap up, but to go into conclusions, so a large number of initiatives are already underway uh, uh, or completed. Um, based on the research, downtowns generate far more tax revenue than other neighborhoods. And in fact, this University of Alberta study we reviewed, i- it even goes so far as to declare that investing in the downtown area, quote, is a proven net gain for the city as a whole. And so downtown's punch well above the weight class, if you like. Uh, as an example of this, downtown St. Albert represents point seven-six percent of the city's entire municipal land area, and yet provides one point six percent of the city's uh, 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 tax revenue. So put another way, the tax revenue percentage within downtown St. Albert is already more than double its land area. And that's despite the number of tax-exempt institutional uses we have around the core, uh, the number of undeveloped or underdeveloped properties in the downtown. Edmonton's equivalent statistic is even more convincing, with one percent of their city's entire land area, their downtown, accounting for nine percent of their total property tax revenue. So these kinds of statistics really help make the business case uh, for DARP in in my view. Likewise, uh, there's a lot of research that suggested a high degree of return on investment. Uh, no researcher, uh, the noted researchers could agree in a single number, but depending on what they looked at and the context, uh, whether it was Canadian or American data, that type of thing, it it really ranged from, for every one dollar of public sector spending in a downtown by a municipality, the associated private sector investment ranged from three dollars to twenty-six or more. So uh, again, really painting that uh, picture based on what's been experienced elsewhere. And we conclude that five of the six highest-ranking initiatives are underway already, uh, with only Millennium Park construction not started yet. So in general, uh, the city is currently pursuing the most strategic kinds of initiatives for the downtown already. And by implication, we would just submit that when any of those top six initiatives come back before uh, council for future decisions, council should be cognizant of their broader strategic importance, synergies, and return on investment potential. And like I said, the lower-ranking initiatives should be reassessed again in the future. Referring to this project's matrix that's in your package as a potential tool. Uh, so to close, as part of a separate study which examines seventeen downtowns across Canada, claimed to be the largest study of its kind. Bear with me while I read this, but I I think it's a really helpful quote. The Canadian Urban Institute concluded that overall, there is no one right way for a city to invest. Yet it seems that many of the downtowns which are receiving both large and small scale. Public investments are seeing some of the most significant transformations. Moreover, the impression emerging from dozens of interviews with private developers. Is that they're motivated to invest in the downtown if they see a city council consistently prioritizing the core. Showing high levels of both vision and commitment to a variety of investments over a sustained period of time. Therefore, having a comprehensive range of investments allows for a municipality to lead by example and demonstrate its ongoing support for the downtown. Uh, so in kind of an anticlimactic sort of way, we're commending that this report simply be accepted, uh, as information today. Uh, we're happy to move on for questions and when we do so, Mayor Hair and I just propose I'll leave.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Slide up here as it again summarizes the entire project.
Actually.
Thank you.
Okay, I know Mike has a question. Go ahead, Mike.
So, um, one of the thing is that the small, Craig, the. Ones that rank lower specifically around miscellaneous improvements, um, there are a number of things that. I I've heard over the years, I've experienced walking around downtown and certainly. In part of the, uh, the business improvement and I'll just give some examples. So. There are a number of trees that were cut down over the years in those little metal grates and I had put in a. Uh, an IR or maybe a CI to say, why aren't we replacing them? The answer came back is we're not replacing them because until we do the larger. DARP analysis, we don't know what that street scape will look like. Um, similarly, the, uh, uh, number of of very uneven. Walking surfaces because we, we have that.
Cobblestone.
Bricks or paving stones or whatever they're called. Um, is, uh, a number of businesses have. Have, uh, brought that to my attention. Same answer. We, we're not going to replace them. Because we don't know what the long term, um, direction is from. The DARP review. I'd actually put in that, uh, an information request with. Some of those asks in it and and then. Uh, Adrian asked or suggested that I could pull that based on today's discussion. So I did pull it. I I don't know if he saw that. Initially or not. Um, so I'm I'm kind of holding those those questions. Uh, the 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 other two one was that, um, councillor Mackay had asked around. Why isn't there, uh, any lighting on that small portion of, uh, St. Joseph? Uh, there's no, no street lighting, uh. Kind of towards the end of it, uh, and and my, my fourth item was, uh. Was a bigger item was that we had talked about the the median. Um, on St. Thomas and there was a, a plan, I believe, at some time to remove the. That brick, whatever we call it, their pile of bricks in the middle of the, the median. Um, and, uh, kind of level that out and and turn it into a really nice. You know, botanical, uh, area, which which is something that we've seen, uh. Very successfully done in, in, uh. Stony Plain, for example, and and many of the other sites that you would, or cities that you had listed as well. So.
Okay, let's take those trees. Want to start with trees?
Yeah, so the, every one of those items, I guess, is, is how, how do we, are we just? Not moving ahead with them or what are we doing?
And Mr. Fletcher, Sean, I have a feeling a lot of these questions are going to be for act dev. Do you want to come join us at the table? I just feel it might be easier in the long run.
So they, they are all, they're all about, you know, how do we improve our, I guess, you know, downtown and downtown vibrancy and. They're, they're small things, but it kind of goes back to a couple of things actually said in your slides is that. Small incremental things can make a big difference, have the biggest impact. Um, certainly hearing it from the business. Yeah, so. You know, question of, I guess, how do they score so low and how do we move them forward? I I don't know.
Um, I'll get to, I'll let Craig answer roughly on the, the scoring. Again, this is for context. It's not necessarily. You know, it got an eight, so it's that much lower than a twelve, but, uh, go ahead, Craig, and explain the scoring.
Certainly, um, so councillor Kelly, great question. And, uh, like I said, um, none of these things are, uh. Bad ideas, they're all good ideas.
Right. Uh, what, what DARP doesn't do is kind of get into the weeds and drive the specifics. Um, it does talk about beautification measures and, um, it it did go into detail about.
Upgrades for for some of those streets, uh, listed there, uh, to St. Thomas, Tache Perron, St. Anne. Um. In terms of the scoring though, it looked at, uh, strategic alignment. So council strategic plan, the corporate business plan, the MDP. Uh, looked at risk, it looked at financial impact, service levels, the de- degree of commitment. Um, and capacity within the organization. And so. Um. With respect to some of the capital improvements, um, not my specific area of expertise, but just given the big price tag on those capital improvements. You know, potentially. You know, one option is, is council could make a motion to provide funding for some of those things. But it might also be strategic to wait until those are coming to the end of their RMR, um, upgrades anyway. So what, when we're already going to be in need of. Upgrading or, um, replacing some of that infrastructure to revisit some of that stuff then. Um, these initiatives also tried to put a lens to. What parts of the downtown are most in need of redevelopment activity? So when you consider the age of some of the buildings, uh, some of them are older, some of them are newer. Uh, some of them are sitting undeveloped right now. Um, this also took into consideration. What parts of downtown are ripe for redevelopment now versus what buildings still have, uh, maybe decades left in their existing life cycle? So it's a complex, um, scoring criteria. It's, uh, it it's not perfect. And I mean, we, we can. C- council should feel free to use this as a tool, but it it doesn't, it's not intended to get into the specifics of. When and where and how and who, um. Uh, Sean's with us now and he may also have some input about. How the business improvement area discussions are going and and which elements of this. They may be willing to consider exploring further. So sorry to put you on the spot, Sean, but, um. Uh, th- there can be overlap with some of the stuff as well.
Uh, I mean, I guess I would start off by saying, uh, you know, let me say the BIA, for instance, are, you know, some of the efforts coming out of economic trouble. We're trying to look at, uh, kind of the, the, the short term actionable items. Like that's the BIA's kind of their, kind of their brand founder, right? What's the, uh, you know, the most impact for, uh, the businesses in the short term, uh, not, not short term thinking. I just needed it in the short term. Yes. Um, but there's definitely, um, you know, complimentary things within, within our, um. So they're at a point now where they're starting to look at, uh, their budget and their initiatives. Um, and so I think we'll have a better, uh, actually, uh, in two weeks, uh, they're having those conversations. And then, of course, I'll open the council in the next couple of months. Um, so council has a pretty good understanding of what the immediate needs are, uh, for the business, and maybe how that plays part in that. The larger, longer basing, uh, documents.
But I, I don't know. The DARP document does provide though is a direction and a vision for each of those streets. So it talks about how it functions within the greater downtown. Um, and with the advent and of adding, um, complete streets also. Um, into St. Albert's toolbox, we've got some abilities to look at those streets to transform them, but it does require. Like again, uh, it does require investment and prioritization from council about those projects. Um, I just, like Craig said, I I don't know if we. Planning isn't in the, the best spot to give you those answers regarding the life cycle.
Yeah.
And the cost implications, because it, they can be quite costly and disruptive as well. So you want to do it in a. In a succinct manner.
Uh, uh, like, I'm with you though, like, so a tree. Find a way, but now we've, we're, we're here, so so that. Well, it says miscellaneous improvements to St. Thomas, Tache Perron, right? I think we should probably pursue some of those improvements and maybe find the low hanging fruit, the cheaper ones, maybe. Maybe that's why they ranked low because they were super expensive. I don't know. Maybe we need engineering here, but, um. I think the, the report you're talking about from the UVA was Heather Thompson's report. And she talked so much about those little kind of improvements to the downtown. And even mentioned, you know, you, you need, um, counsel and corporate commitment to a downtown. And when you see like in front of trysts, it's dangerous, the sidewalk there. And even just a missing tree, it's looks uncared for when you've got small things. So maybe it's worth. Um, um, further conversation on what the cost of some of these individual things are. And if they're within reason, we might wanna. Or, so tell me is it.
Tim and Adrian.
Yeah, okay. Um, I think when I, when I hear about the points, it wholly aligns with our strategic plan, all of these things. And, um, so to me, it must have fallen down either in the price tag or capacity.
It it's, it's all of those things. So the only thing I would say is, is not as small as you think it is in the sense that. It takes diverse effort and time from somewhere else, right? And so is the tree as important as Millennium Park? Is it as important? And I'm not saying it can't be done.
Hey.
Um, but it it's not a microcosm. We're just gonna put some trees in here. That means that there might be implications to other things that councils identified as priorities. And so, you know, a- as you look holistically, is the investment in Millennium Park in twenty-two St. Thomas more important than some of those other things? And and I, I, I realize that might sound obstructious. That's not the case, right? Because all of these are important and we could figure it all out. But the little things that. I think there's kind of an impression, just plant some trees and be good. Like that's actually more. Uh, impactful than it probably seems at face value. Because it means we're not planting trees or taking care of trees or doing other things that are else, which is fine.
I don't even know how many trees there are.
Yeah, paid that picture for it, wanted. Though right now we're focusing on the big muscle.
I, I, I hope I, I don't, just two comments. One is, I think the BIA would look at it and say, even if they had. Raised a ton of money and they said, you know, the, the tree. And we're not, we're not talking, talking about replacing the tree in front of Gracie James that was cut down. Three years ago because it died and has been spray painted orange because it's a tripping hazard. And I don't think the BIA would look at that and say. Even if they had a million dollars in their, in their bank account, they would, they would look at that and say, I don't think that's a BIE. Uh, yeah. Project.
Yeah.
That would be viewed as a, a city, just a standard.
Maybe they could help identify the projects that they would prioritize in the downtown.
Right.
And then come to the city with that request.
So, so they, they pretty much have in, in discussions with me. They've talked about why are the trees not being replaced? Why are the, and and I, again, not saying redo the whole sidewalk. But the maintenance of replacing some of those paving stones in front of, uh, Cajun House that have been a. You know, a known tripping hazard for years and, you know, and never get looked at. Uh. The, the, the missing light posts at the end of, of, uh, uh, St. Joseph has, has been an ask by those businesses for. You know, it's, it's like, you want me to stay open, but not even a light post there. Safety of people going to their, their cars or parking, um. So that they're not, they're not the big, built to, to your. Comment of big muscle movements. They are, they are maintaining. I'm not, you know, DARP envisioned redoing a whole bunch of, like, getting rid of all of the paving stones that, for example. I'm saying just fix what we have, make it a little bit better, um.
So we, we can revisit this, counselor. I, I guess I, I just come back and say, so if council is going to tell us, hey. In the next, next number of, like, we're not interested in the big stuff, um, then, then, you know, Bill, Tim, you know, Adrian, please chime in on this. But my only caution was it's, it's not super simple as you think it is because it's, it's a zero sum sort of capacity game. It can be done because council will prioritize it and tell us to do it. We will absolutely get along with it. But what we don't want to do is fix bricks to rip them out again in a two years' time. Um, to rebuild. So if, if you're ten, generally that those things are going to be longer term, then absolutely the RMR. Uh, stuff that happened, I would submit that I think we should wait for, you know, like, let, let the BIA get their feet underneath them and have that discussion. Particularly they've had it with you and they've not had it with us, um.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, and so, not to run amok on this, but I think absolutely those things can happen, but. That, that sort of holistic piece, I just wanted to caution that it's, it's, the tree is not just a tree, um, I, I guess is my point, right?
Yes, and, and I, I wouldn't want to misrepresent it, Bill. BIA has not had that discussion with me. Individual business owners have had that discussion with me, so I. Anyway.
And I thought, so, so Tim, um, who does all things trees and Adrian, is there anything you want to add?
Yeah, I, 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 we will take this away definitely. It, uh, it, I presume it would be a function of if the. The major project of St. Thomas, uh, Tache Perron were going ahead in a timely manner. It wouldn't have been prudent to do the individual maintenance items, but we will take this away. If that is going to be a prolonged process in the, in the interest of the maintenance like you had mentioned.
And then you had also had a question about the big median on St.
Yeah, the, the big median between, uh, St. Thomas, St. Thomas. It, I think it was envisioned that. That would have been taken out and leveled and made more of a, you know, a. A nice flower garden. I had, but again, I, I, I don't want to, I don't think anybody envisioned that. We're gonna turn it into the Bouchard Gardens, right? Like we.
It, it's still in the plan. I think again, that one is probably a bit more. Again, not the engineers here, but, um, I think that one would be a little bit more impactful. Um, to remove that median, I'm assuming it would have some impact on all aspects of engineering. Drainage, utilities, all of that kind of stuff. So I think that one would probably true, that's a pretty big piece of infrastructure that exists right now. Um, and to remove, I think you.
Funded at one point and we unfunded it. Feel like.
May have, that, that, that may be the case, but that would be, I would suggest be part of the whole overall street improvement as well.
I, I should also mention holistically because it's not part of DARP, nor is it really been sensitized in any detail, but. With, uh, niche developments, um, work on the blind pig site, there's significant city investment that's going to have to go into that access lane. Uh, to bring the utilities underground and then do the connections piece so that it will become council at some point in time. This year, uh, that's probably a hundred thousand dollars issue.
Okay, um, so. A- a- and then I'll come back to the light at the end of St. Thomas, uh, but. Did, it seemed to bounce around between. You know, it, it, the city put it, put it in there or put it in or. Uh, how, how would? Yeah, that one again is maybe probably a little bit bigger piece of infrastructure, but, uh.
I, I think that's one maybe we can take back and, uh, work between. I'm assuming that would be a bit with engineering and public. And just utility, utilities in general, so. I, I, I can't begin to answer that question for you.
See, if I can add in on that one, I believe we did do some looking into that and, uh, it's private road. Um, and not a city road, but, uh, we can do some digging into that and.
Well, I've, not all of it, Kathy Diane.
No, but some of it, so.
About right towards the end it is.
That, I was just trying to dig up an email from Donnie.
Yeah, I was just doing the same thing.
On that before.
But, but I, yeah, and, and that, that's a challenge is that. Not, not wanting to put a light standard on. You know, the apartment building's property, but. On one hand, we're saying that that. On one hand, we're saying that that back alley is going to be a major entranceway into twenty two Saint Thomas. And yet right at the corner. Of of. That, you know, where the businesses end and then obviously there's a delineation of where it becomes. Private property, you would normally have a light standard there that would. Provide security and safety for. Shops that we're trying to say, hey, please stay open and and uh, you know, in the wintertime, he can't even. I I wouldn't want to walk back there. It's pitch black. So my my question is, how do we bundle these all together and? Put a notice of motion in this. And I and I'm very sensitive to yesterday's conversation about capacity. But I'm also trying to find that balance of. How do we move forward on? Like we're, we're committed to. Downtown um as well in our strategic plan. Don't want to do all of DARP. Don't don't get me wrong, but some very targeted, specific. Improvements, not rebuilding the whole thing. So so I guess I'm.
If I could recommend, if you're willing, because I mean, it's not going to happen with the weather like it is now. Um I I would. Submit that allow that that the B I A to get their feet underneath them. They're not going to fix the tree or the bit. That's not their job, is it? Understanding what their vision is then allows us to look at, you know, or or come back to council to say. Here's how we think those things can fix. I think the big decision is if council today says, you know, we understand. That the large scale sort of streetscape improvements are not going to happen anytime soon. Right? Those R M R projects become. More important, quite frankly, um right and and scheduled to schedule. So if we could revisit this in a few weeks. With the results of where the B I A's budget and what their vision is, I think that would allow us. To be more carefully, ask some of the the small elements to your point. Um that we look at it and that would be complimentary. And we'll look, I think separately at the light because that's. Is that, is that fair? Because I mean, the construction will happen before the weather gets better. Um so we can, we've got time to.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, no, I I I recognize it's not time sensitive, but. My my concern is that the B I A will be focused in on. Things that they. Know is, know are within their purview. And like they'll say, their view of beautification is we're gonna, we're gonna fund flower pots or. Some.
Yes.
And and they will totally. Uh overlook. Through. Multiple years of frustration of of getting that tree replaced in front of Gracie James.
But I'm not advocating that they would replace it. I think we should understand what they want to do before we go in and start digging stuff up. And so we're not quite sequestered in complimentary, I I guess was my, right? And so if they have a vision of, no, we want to put a, I mean, stuff up.
Yeah, yeah.
A bunch of patios in. That would take, then that's a separate, right, this guy and perhaps the patio covers with trees.
Yeah.
Um, right? I I think that's the sort of, okay, let's understand what their vision is and then we figure. Um because we wouldn't ask them to do it, certainly. If we've identified it, right, you know.
Hey, Wes.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um. Great, great presentation. Thank you very much. Um. C R Ls, when we were at the Mid City Mayor's Caucus, they had uh. Three case studies and and they were all sort of poster boys for how this works. So uh. You say that the the provincial government is is revising their uh criteria for uh C R L. Engagement?
Yes, Counselor Rodhead. So we, a number of members of administration met with Government of Alberta representative from that. Program uh back in, back in the late summer, early fall uh ish and uh. They advised that the C R L is both a a tool of last resort, a a financial tool of last resort. And furthermore, it it pertains to what they called blighted areas. So when we kind of looked at the. Eligibility criteria. And what we intended to use it for, we didn't think there was a perfect match. And so we we walked through that with the G O A representative, who also pointed out that their eligibility criteria are being revisited right now. So it it. It's in that underway bucket, as I, as I mentioned, because we've begun talking about it. Um it's not, it it, we we've hit pause while these discussions unravel, but we we are keeping tabs on it. Uh we'll probably do a a check in again sometime soon to see where it's at and what what may or may not have changed. But uh that's why for now, based on the snapshot in time, it's. Ranked quite low. If it were to. Come to light that. Downtown Saint Albert would be a great fit. This would probably rank uh much higher. And and that's what this is. It's it's just, it's a tool to help kind of visually prioritize. Um what the immediate priorities are before us and as information changes, um so too can this.
Yeah, I I would say, we actually looked and the team can speak to this beyond downtown as well, right? So we looked sort of citywide at where could a C R L potentially be leveraged um as a tool? Adgerlandish, maybe sort of kinda, but not really. Uh we didn't really have anything that fell into their very defined criteria. Which is good because it means Saint Albert is not depressed or contaminated, but you know, it it does. It's difficult to leverage that.
And they didn't hint on what the eligibility criteria, what direction they were going?
No, and they didn't, like they didn't. Commit to it either, like we were speaking with administrators. I think this is more of a, maybe an advocacy component, which I think uh. Trevor's team is working on, but right now as it stands. Bit blunt. I don't think our downtown would qualify for the program as it is.
I it's not that we don't have a brownfield downtown. We do. And and so so my follow up question is, do we have a a map of brownfields in the community? I'm assuming we do.
We know where, we do know which ones are, we don't have a map per se, um but we do know where they are. Um you know, we do have one or two properties that are. Former gas stations and and such like that, but um the scope of that to get the revitalization levy is.
There's a scale issue. Through while, right? In terms of um. The deferred tax revenue may get worth your while.
And and the amount of development that, it's a twenty year program, so you need to. Get everything back within that twenty years. So there's also a timing component as well. With the levy.
Cochrane was sort of the poster child for it and of course they had this big. What is it? Domtar, contaminated site. Uh but the results were significant. So I I'm glad the the eyes are on it because you'd hate to miss an opportunity there. Um secondly, um. Hemingway Center, does that actually have a historical designation against it?
No, it is identified as a significant building, but it hasn't been designated.
So we can still blow it up and not be thrown in jail?
A lot of dynamite.
Designation process would be up to council to do and council has not designated it.
Okay, well, that's that's good to know and 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 the reason why I've had conversation with. With our friends over A H S and 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 they said it's already a done deal that that we can't do anything to that because it's. But that's not true. You know, and to me, it looks like a punker.
If there would absolutely be antibodies, right? That would have to be navigated, put in. The official council designation is an historical building. I do not believe it's happening.
But you say get thrown in jail because it is a jail.
Well, it just reminds me of being at Juno Beach. It kind of looked like one of the constructions there, but anyway, I.
For I will a hundred percent confirm that, but that is my recollection. It is on our list, but it hasn't.
Okay.
Okay. Third question, uh development incentives for the downtown. I I know we've talked about that before. Is there, is there going to be a report coming to council of considerations around specific to the downtown area? Or is this sort of global incentives under consideration for all of the city?
Sure, so we're actually looking at three streams at the moment. We're looking at uh an investment attraction stream. We're looking at uh community wide uh incentives as a retention. Uh since the stream and then also specific to downtown.
Okay.
Um so that'll be coming forward. Uh we're kind of doing a bit of betting internally um as well at the moment, so we've uh we've got a few stakeholder. Engagements on this one, uh but that will definitely be coming forward to council.
So and and then my final question around, uh so. DARP, it seems to me that that the whole downtown is constrained by, you know, Saint Albert Trail. Uh Real, Mission and. And Sir Winston Churchill, I it it, is there any way of revisiting? Can we make it larger? I guess it's my question. Are we constrained virtually by geography?
No, we can expand the definition of of the downtown. There are.
The boundaries of it.
Yep. In the past. Make some bold statements that might not be a hundred percent accurate, um because I was not here during this time. But I think the last DARP um study area was confined to its current. Um parameters based upon the existing development and the um. Landowners to participate or not participate. So um if we want to extend it over the river a little bit, we could look at that. Um we could look at it. Um there's a few properties. Um Green Grove as well that incorporated. Think technically. There's some other outlying properties here and there that could be added in as well. Um it's also not to say that we can't. Think of them in this, in in the same manner.
Are you thinking of Green Grove?
Well, sort of there, but but also, you know, it'd be interesting if. If it went across in upper trail to the other side or. You know, incorporate some of that land there, might answer the question. Wanted to be there.
A little log cabin there?
Yeah, a little log cabin and. And maybe up to Bishop or something like that.
Right, so there is actually one of the projects that um council has um assigned planning to look at as well as the infill project. And as part of that, we are looking at the Saint Albert Trail corridor in general. Um so some of those. I think like that's where we're seeing a little bit of the interplay between the downtown and what lands on Saint Albert Trail. So even kind of going across the river and thinking about um. Some of the properties that kind of hit right by the bridge. Should they be in the downtown or are they on the trail corridor? One way, it doesn't matter. I think what we're really looking at is what the vision is for those properties. And their redevelopment potential in general.
Fair enough. Was my question.
Anyone else have questions? Go ahead.
On the Civic Plaza, I think it ties to the, what you had said about, didn't we unfund some? Couple of years ago in relation to when we were trying to skinny down our.
When we went to our big capital plan and. Axed and.
Plaza was one of the ones that fell off that list as well.
Yeah, but it's still a project listed under DARP. It's not funded, but yeah.
I got you. So we, when we took it off of the that list, we didn't take it out of it. It just didn't disappear out of our entire of it.
That all you have?
I, yeah, that's all I had. I mean, you guys all asked my.
Go ahead.
So um it it this is a more generic higher level question and and DARP was. Or still is, I think, fairly uh prescriptive in things that talk about um. Round floor. Should should be commercial or, you know, not residential and. You know, there's certain setbacks and overhangs and all of that. Have they, those been revised to? Uh kind of follow some of the newer. Trends that have become apparent in the last little while, that, you know, ten years ago when DARP started, it said like, wow, this is a great idea. You know, it always have commercial at. At ground level, but. Things have kind of changed in the last few years and uh maybe there's a question for Adrian, but.
Or Craig, I think did all the research maybe, yeah.
Or Craig, yeah, I, yeah. Has DARP, any of the other? Subpolicies been updated or changed or?
I'll happily take a stab at it, Counselor Kilik, and then maybe I'll pass to Adrian to supplement, but um. Uh when DARP was initially improved, it it did contain a lot of detail, um arguably more detail than than it should. A lot of the detail really would belong more in a land use bylaw in terms of its ability to be. Attached to development permit or subdivision, for example. So about a year ago, you'll recall, I brought those DARP amendments to council. And basically that cleaned up the DARP to change the word shall to should. And, you know, must to be and things of that nature, just to soften the language.
Right.
The detail now um will come through the land use bylaw rewrite, so that'll be the opportunity to. Provide those types of inputs, should it be council's desire to see uh more flexibility. At the development permit stage or subdivision stage, um Mister Slot or.
I'm just gonna add on to that as well is that some of those policies were very specific to certain streets.
Yeah.
Um so. We've changed the policy to be more visionary versus uh descriptive. But also, um I think there are some streets that. Probably you want to have more of a residential focus, or there are some streets that you want it more as a commercial focus. So that um vision is still within DARP. Kind of saying that this is more of a commercial street, Perron, for example, versus it um being residential. Um Adrian, did you have anything else to add to that?
Uh not really. I mean, I I guess just from a. Uh a high level perspective, the L U B has, the L U B rewrite has. Kind of looked at DARP and we're trying to normalize um some of the regulations because they were so prescriptive, as Christina mentioned, by street. Um by location. Um but I think that there probably still is opportunity. For example, that discussion about residential on first floor is something that uh we didn't go there with the L U B. Um so if council uh wants to provide some sort of direction, we can. Take that away and look at. Um, you know. Adding that into the draft as we have it. And it it's just, it is, it's, I think there's a lot of moving pieces in this, going back to the whole discussion about projects, like. We we haven't, we haven't moved forward with some of these big spends because there was so much um kind of. Uh background work that needed to be done to understand. Wh- what the real costs and benefits of these things were, what the capacities of these things, uh like what the capacities of our servicing or infrastructure, et cetera, are. And so we're just trying to pull all this information together. So now we're at like the. Kind of an inflection point where now we're understanding. Where we are with some of our, the strategies that were in DARP and I think the next step is to come back and really talk about. Again, like those capital projects, are there some that we need to? Remove entirely from DARP and from our tenure uh cap list? Um and are there opportunities for us to revisit the DARP in its entirety and maybe look at? Changing boundaries and um. And and being a little bit more higher level like an area redevelopment plan should be. So it's kind of like this. This is kind of a summary of what we've learned to date based on all the information that we've compiled over the last few years, which has kind of held back some of these projects. And now we're at the next point where we can start to. Uh finally move forward, I think.
Yeah, I just didn't, wasn't sure how, like. You know, changing that language around should to shall, uh I think I got that right. You know, no, no, don't get me confused. Because it it can, and I only use the the ground level. Residential as an example, but there was all kinds of things in there like signage and. Canopies and setback like.
Yes, a lot of that stuff has been either removed or. Um changed so that it can. It enables the development officer to look at the application to determine if holistically it's still achieving. What we want to see within the downtown. So there may be um. Let's say, maybe there's a building that incorporates townhouse, um half of it has townhouse development on the main. on the main floor and the rest is a commercial component. And if it works well within the streets, they have the ability to to approve that.
Yeah, okay.
Um, maybe it's also but they also might look at and say, oh, no, this is not going to work at all. It's you know, it's right at the corner of St. Anne and Peron. This is too um important of a location to just have residential windows backing onto the streets.
So we've changed it in DARP?
Yep.
Now, are we updating the land use bylaw to reflect that?
Yes.
Okay.
So um, we did make sure when we looked at that they were generally aligned, but then through the rewrite project, we've as Adrian has said, we've spent a decent amount of time looking at the downtown district itself.
Are we getting rid of D C M U?
Uh, we are looking at adding um specific mixed-use districts.
But get rid of the D C part of it?
Um, that is the intent is that we'll have the specialized districts, but I think we are keeping the D C M U to reflect the historical designations that already exist.
Okay.
So um properties that already have a D C M U on them, they can apply to get this new standardized zoning. But if they've gone in and made all of their thinking of the um Oakmont um developments.
Or Amicon.
Example, yeah, or Amicon. Um, right now, they might not want to actually change that zoning because it's very it's written to enable their exact
Right, okay. Um. So I was looking at some of the best practices that you discovered, which were cool and interesting. So the first one was land use bylaw. We've changed the parking, right? So we're pretty permissive in parking in the downtown now for new developments?
They're allowed to provide a parking as part of the update to the land use bylaw. They'll be able to provide a parking study.
There's no um minimums for parking, right? Is that correct?
Um, Adrian, I I I know that this is coming through the big rewrite, so.
Yeah, it, the intent is for uh people to provide parking studies, which justify their need for parking rather than us specifying parking, so it'll be industry-dependent.
I thought we did that for the downtown last term. To sort of enable the twenty-two St. Thomas development.
Oh, we, we
We did it too.
Yeah.
W- we still enable it, but there's still, there's, it it's a nuance. There's still parking requirements, so that was why twenty-two St. Thomas still had a variance that they needed because they couldn't meet their s- the required parking.
Okay. Um, but it talks about updating your revising the land use bylaw for sidewalk patios. So we did pilot projects for sidewalk patios. Is the land use bylaw now going to just make them really easy and enable that?
Adrian, did you get that?
Yeah, I believe that, I believe that the patios are enabled. I can double-check that, but I'm pretty sure that we adjusted that based on um kind of what we, what we'd seen.
I'm thinking of some of the communities that we've all been to that have a patio on the sidewalk and then they take a wooden sidewalk that goes around the patio. Make that like, I feel like that was a problem in St. Albert, but now that's going to be easy.
Uh, no, that's, so I wouldn't. We still vet it to make sure that there's a a public throughfare.
Yeah.
So it it it's not to say that um we're just going to enable people to be taking up the public sidewalks.
No, you have to build one around the patio, right?
They, there still has to be access around the patio, so yeah, so they're like, yeah, it again, there's a lot of specifics about it um with some of the applications where we've seen like applications wanted to completely take over the sidewalk and leave no pedestrian throughfare, so that's not what we're enabling. We're we, when we review patio applications, we review them to make sure that there's still um physical access um around the patio area.
Okay. So I think I remember hearing in Alberta, A G L C requires if you're serving booze that the patio is attached. I don't know if you remember that, attached to the building, so you can't just have the sidewalk separating the patio and the building and so
Yeah, and they have to be fenced as well. There's A G L C requirements that are required.
As long as it was, we're thinking about that when we're doing the land use bylaw.
Yep.
White Avenue is like that.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
They built it, they built the ones outside around, yeah. And in Jasper, the municipality built little walkways. Yeah, I don't know if you've ever seen them and uh the city did that. It's it's awesome. Um.
And I think that, you know, kind of just to kind of go back to those streetscaping improvements, I think now with the desire for more patio space and more public realm, there may be, this this would feed into some of that conversation about the street improvements as well. Um, because
Always so much, yeah, there was always so much concern that if you do this, that you lose two or three parking stalls. If we change our parking, yeah, if we change the parking in our L U B then.
But this, this would be, this is part of the trade-off that um the downtown businesses and uh the city residents themselves have to think about and news council is is the parking more important or the vibrancy and and the business needs?
The last one I wanted to ask about um under best practices uh was density or performance bonusing, and I don't quite understand that. I feel like if it felt that wanted to build more units, they had to give public space or I can somebody explain it to me? And it sounds like it it happens in a L U B, so.
Certainly.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and I'll maybe ask Adrian to supplement, but generally speaking, the land use bylaw would say, based on your site and your zoning and all that, here's uh your setbacks, your height um and and so forth. If a developer were to go kind of above and beyond in terms of perhaps their landscaping or providing some kind of public amenity, depending on the jurisdiction, that could be anything from landscaping to you know, an underground subway station, the municipality would grant that developer um an additional story or two of height or a parking variance or or some kind of win-win. Um, I believe Adrian in the land use bylaw updates, uh, there are some draft clauses around this and bonusing uh with respect to um some of those items, maybe you can speak to what we've proposed?
Yeah, that's correct. It's a, it's a clause that we have for high-density residential right now and it's um, as Craig uh articulated, it is a way to um encourage developers to provide those uh amenities that um councillor, the public wants in the downtown area. So that is something that we have been looking at through the L U B amendment to um enable uh some sort of incentives for developers to to provide those uh those features.
Within St. Albert, we see most of the developers that have taken advantage of that clause within our existing zoning put the parking underneath. Put underground parking instead of
That's good.
And then, yeah, then they get extra, they look at an extra story of development roughly, right? So that's where the trade-off is. It has to depend on if it works for their performance or not.
Right. Um, when I, and then when I read some of the best practices, it feels like we're doing almost everything else. Are we still doing beautification grants, Sean?
Yeah.
Civic plazas, parks, Millennium Park would be there. Like a public art, culture venues, like we're pretty lucky in what we have in our downtown, so. Um, and the last one I wanted to is we dropped looking at transit. That was, I can't, Adrian's so big that the, now the slide is so small. But there was something in there about trans- transit and movements or review downtown transit servicing. So so what what would that do?
So, Beahan, that was one of the new initiatives we looked at. So this wasn't originally in DARP back in twenty-ten. But when we looked across the country at these other municipalities, um, some of them intentionally uh updated their transit routes to ensure higher levels of service in the downtown core where they want more vibrancy, they want um access to start earlier in the day, longer into the evening, on the weekends where maybe they didn't previously, it might have just been Sunday to Friday. So based upon what our peers are experimenting with across the country, this is one we should have in our radar, just to put into the matrix and um to be explored at the time of a future, you know, project planning, budget cycles, that type of thing.
That's not something I'm going to push forward, but it just sounds like as we grow and get more congested and speaking of that, as the parking, so there was a review of tr- transportation for traffic and parking. You talked a lot about the traffic. Um, I know the parking study has revealed this, plenty of parking in the downtown. Has that been shared with some of the downtown businesses? So I can stop hearing about parking problems.
Planning uh branch goes out fairly regularly, roughly once every two years, two, three years, and we go out and count cars. Um, and and the parking, we just we did one last fall. You're going to get a, hasn't been a high priority for us to get that report completed, but um you will be getting that in the next uh couple of weeks. Um, with the the survey results of it, and there still is significant parking availability in the downtown. Um, in fact, um the parking lot across the street used to be what was considered a high-functioning parking lot, achieving its its values since uh post-pandemic. Um, it hasn't. It's actually, it's dropped down in its usage, so it's now around seventy percent full uh during the core hours, which means it's now there's over-dedication of parking even in that lot.
Okay.
Um, so um we're gonna hopefully go out again, either this spring or this fall, and do a recount to see. Again, we did this in twenty-twenty-two with the you know, we're kind of back to the new normal at this stage. Um, and so let's, let's just make sure that this is still consistent and we weren't dealing with some lingering effects.
Good job for a summer student. Go count cars.
Yeah, it's a, it, you know.
And so it's really just an issue when you've got a big event at the Arden or the, there's something in Lions Park or those, but just, which is expected. You don't want to build
You don't want to have
For the highest peak time, right?
Right. So I think that there are different, you know, I think, you know, even, you know, during the farmer's market, there is shuttle services, you know, kind of looking at 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 that. Um, and again, more wayfarer, uh wayfinding, letting people know about where the parking lots are within the downtown. Yes, you may have to walk a little bit, but again, it's, I think this analogy has been utilized quite a lot. If you look at the downtown and compare it to to the Costco uh parking lot, everything within the Costco parking lot would fit within our downtown. So if you're willing to walk to the Costco from the outer edges of their parking lot, you can walk it. Flippant, but uh maybe being a little flippant, but um you could make it to where the Arden Theater is as well.
Just don't get buggy rage in downtown. Buggy rage can say it's Costco.
Maybe we're a little more polite. I don't know.
Some of the studies really address parking that you were reading, some of the other communities.
Um.
I'm just talking about free parking versus paid parking.
It could, could
And the profits you make from paid parking and what they invested in.
Um, it it's really the the parking end of things wouldn't be my particular area of expertise, Mayor Heron, but I I would submit that different jurisdictions um will inevitably have different conclusions. Uh, but at the end of the day, parking that um is free isn't actually free. A typically, a typical three-meter-by-five-meter parking stall, that that can vary in price once you consider the land, the asphalt, um, uh, maybe the lighting, maybe there's security, all that type of stuff. Uh, is it above or below ground? It can range from, say, five thousand dollars of space to sixty thousand plus for an underground parking stall. So when you consider that and you consider the highest and best use of land, a lot of downtowns are thinking um, you know, yeah, do we build to accommodate that that worst-case scenario, the major festivals? Or do we build to accommodate, you know, the ninetieth percentile, so to speak? I don't think I have a perfect answer for you.
That ties in a little bit with that whole idea of the transit service as well.
Right.
Kind of even through the T I A, what we did find, you know, again, what is our limit of comfortableness with the, with the road infrastructure and the fact that it's still all functions even at um some of these high build-out rates that were that were pumped into the um into the study, but it did talk of better transit to help facilitate that as well. So I think as we see some of these changes come into the downtown, that's when we'll start looking at uh our transit, our transit support and then that whole idea of parking.
If I transit that bad, it goes right down St. Anne Street. Walkable then, you know.
I think that depends on where you're going.
Yeah. And want to see, Amicon has introduced paid parking into St. Albert before the city did, so yeah, that goes, yeah. All right, questions? Oh, go ahead, Shelley.
Thank you. I just have a couple, and I apologize if there's something that you've mentioned that I missed out on, but um you've uh put it in a lower prioritization, the wayfinding signs and such, and the billboards and rooftop signs were encompassed in that area, so is there a plan to avoid those invasive huge signage uh things going on in St. Albert? Or is it not even going to be addressed until you're down to that level?
So um councillor Bromenski, the the signage and wayfinding, um, it's in that underway uh bucket um in the sense that we have been doing a number of initiatives over the years in terms of um signage for uh uh major destinations, um parking, that sort of thing. Um, with respect to the the billboards that I think you're alluding to, I believe the answer is yes, within the land use bylaw. Whether it's the current one or the future one, I I am not sure, but there is wordage somewhere that talks about no third-party advertising.
And rooftop, yeah.
Correct. Yeah, so someone, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I I believe you can have a sign that fits all of the standards about your own business on a site, but it can't be an enormous billboard for um a a party located elsewhere.
Okay. And then tourism, what percentage does that have in your plan? You know, if you were just pulling out of thin air. I know it's like, we're not even talking DARP for a number of years, so I won't get too much into detail, but.
Uh, yeah, you you know, tourism specifically, you you don't see that um word here per se, and yet tourism is kind of peppered into a little bit of all of these things. Tourists um will come to an area where they can have an experience and all of these facilitate an experience of some sort, whether it's the zoning regulations, a park or the pipes underground that you can't even see. They all play a role in providing that experience, which is what uh brings tourists, which is, you know, why we all travel to the destinations we travel to on vacation, because we can have an experience and see an experience or taste and um so tourism kind of overlaps with a little bit of all of these, uh as well as the transportation-related um items. So hope that answers tourism specifically as a ref
Tourism essentially has a lot of grant opportunities too, right?
Right.
It it has to be worded somewhere.
So I think within DARP, the the scope of the existing uh re- revitalization plan is that focused more on the built environment and the um components within that. Um, tourism is a beneficiary of a quality-built environment, which create vibrant spaces, but an actual tourism tourism initiative within DARP, has it been that's not one of the actions that was identified. They thought might more align with either um some of the work that um Sean is working on um through economic development is kind of that. And and probably Elizabeth's good as well.
Yep, I can speak a little bit to that as well, so um as uh as Craig mentioned, I think there's a lot of flavor from tourists, right? A lot of the efforts we do uh focusing in on save this for economy and how important it is. Uh, it's al- it's almost more complimentary to a lot of the things we're doing. I mean, if I was to take a look at, say, council uh priorities at the moment, you know, looking at some of the downtown vibrancy things, um there's an aspect of tourism, I think it's playing a part in all of those things. We are doing a lot of stakeholder engagement to see if there's maybe direction needed in some of the the tourism efforts. Um, but at the moment, I would say it's more complimentary um to to some of the other active um elements that we do at the moment.
I know, like Those discussions are occurring, right? I know that the Chamber of Commerce's example uh has struck kind of a subcommittee to talk about tourism. Uh, economic development is intimately involved in that. And so there, there's a number of things looking at tourism holistically, of which a subset is that visitor's rights, which the farmer's markets and the Rockin' Augusts and then the children's festivals, those things that bring people in that have an access to downtown.
I I would say too, um, not speaking for the V I A, but I can relay a few things. Uh, you know, a lot of their focus is going to be on things like getting more people downtown. a lot of their focus is going to be on things like getting more people downtown, more people downtown longer, uh, those types of things. So there is going to be a tourism aspect to some of their efforts. And so I think it'll be uh, aligning some of those things along the way as, as they develop their, their branding and identity and strategies.
Well, thank goodness for tourism, because that's when downtown's busy.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Well, definitely adds to the vibrancy, um, which is part of the underlying goal of this document, right? Kishina? Yep, just a couple. Um, so the same twenty-two St. Thomas Street, I know that there's been, this may not be for you to answer, I'm not sure if we have the answer, but what I'd love to know is we keep hearing that if the province is going to help us fund it, that they are expecting more from the city as far as financial commitment than what we've done, or am I misinterpreting that? Is what we're doing enough?
So I say, I think the discussion was, they've not asked for more from the city to the best of my knowledge. Uh, you know, the, the two point six million dollar commitment of land was, was significant and allowed them to go out and, and seek in particular grants from other local government. I, I think the discussion is um, you know, if, if navigating that space proves problematic, is there more the city could do to sweeten the pot? Uh, to use sort of a vernacular, uh, but they've not asked us for it.
Because like, my concern is just this could be on hold for decades. Like, we, we've allocated, but um, that doesn't mean it's going to materialize. Have we had, Natalie's not here, right?
She's online.
Oh, are you? Okay. Hi, councillor. Um. Uh, has Homeland had discussions about what they think is the probability of having come forward, or is there anything more that we need to do to um, help it move up forward? Have they had any of those discussions? I know they haven't officially asked, but has there been discussions about it?
Not so much from the city. They, they've spoken very highly about their partners with the city. I believe they're still meeting regularly. The biggest challenge is that capital funding. Um, so certainly if the city has twenty million dollars that we're willing to invest, um, that would certainly move the project along, but that's, that's the, the big need right now.
Like, and what I'm wondering about is, I'm just like, I'm thinking about um, at the communities and we had it, like, we would grant it on condition that we received other funding. So has there been any thought about, or their, their need of saying, well, would you do a conditional grant, saying if the province pointed up forty million dollars that we would agree to the sixth to make it topped up or something like that? Has there been any need for that, or do you think it's just a matter of waiting?
That would absolutely help in terms of the grant applications. So every single commitment like that helps um, their, their ability to, to successfully get those grants. Um, from my perspective, I, I believe that the, that, that ask hasn't happened uh, out of respect for the city very clearly saying that they were not interested in providing capital funding. Um, if that's changed, um, absolutely, that, that would help, help them um, kind of further along the project.
Do they think that they're able to, they're gonna go get this grant funding, I guess, is what I'm wondering. Like, if, do we have any idea of it?
It, you know, it hits all the check marks. Um, Mayor Heron's been fantastic about connecting with uh, particularly provincial M L As about the need. And so um, right now, we're, we're waiting for, for the budget to come out, kind of same as everyone else. Um, so, uh, you know, all, all the M L As and, and federally as well, um, this project is spoken of highly. The need is demonstrated in this area. Um, so, you know, I, I don't know if, if, I'm kind of looking at the list here for Elizabeth, or even Mayor Heron, has anything addition, you know, in addition to say about, about the discussions that have been had. But, you know, everything I've heard is that this is a great project. Um, wait, is, is kind of what I've heard.
Okay. Well, the budget should be coming out sometime soon. So, yeah, so like, you know, just a few more sleeps, right? So, okay. Um, okay. Thanks for that. Um, the other question I had was, um, Adrian, you mentioned about um, the next steps for like the L U B and discussing about the capital plan. Do we have, I don't know if it's you or, or Fletcher, like an idea, like the L U B, I understand maybe coming out in Q two, if at all, optimistically might come out in Q two, um, Q three, um, okay. And so I guess what, when would we, when are we thinking we're gonna have further discussions about the capital plan? Is that going to be during just the R M R? Is that the plan during the R M R time in May, June? Um, for this or?
Yeah, I, I, so I think, uh, thank you for the question, councillor Hughes. I think as you're aware, in the past, we've pushed a lot of those um, projects out and, and basically made them um, something that wouldn't be funded anytime. In the near future, now that we've got at least a little bit of this work done, I think we can go back and revisit our timeframe and look at the biggest bang for the buck. Um, whether we need more work to kind of assess competitiveness among the projects or not, I don't know. But that would be my anticipation, is that you'll start to see a little bit more of um, a hierarchy of, of um, capital project proposals um, going forward now that we've got this work done.
You mentioned that you want a council direction, if you wanted to have like the L U B softened for main floors, for example. I don't personally want to like, start writing your document for you, having not even seen it. But I, I don't know also how to, I, I feel like just the temperature of the room, and maybe I'm reading the wrong room. But um, that we want to encourage development, and if it requires softening some of the rules more than what's been done, that um, if it would actually spur on development, that's like our cheapest bang for the buck, really, if we don't have to. Only if money, we're just simply allowing developers to um, get what, you know, what they need to have out of the L U B to make it happen. So I'd actually had to do that unless you want us just to worry about it when it comes forward in the L U B, or how would, how would you suggest that we move forward with that?
Well, I, I can say, uh, we can react to the temperature in the room and revisit that particular component. And um, and then when we present, the L U B will flag uh, what we have or haven't done as far as um, downtown amendments to help to streamline or encourage um, development.
Yeah.
And um, and then if there's motions that are needed, then we can do that.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't want to write your stuff for you, and I don't want to guess what you.
No, I appreciate it.
Yeah, so. Is L U B coming back to committees? That's what we decided, right?
Uh, it was coming back, um, fairly focused on um.
Zero lot line stuff?
Lot line motion, the, the, the muscle movement changes since the last briefing, not revisiting that.
Okay.
That. Uh, councillor, we, uh, Mayor Heron, we haven't uh, made a determination on zero lot line. So that request, right, as of right now, the zero lot line is in. Um, administration is still working through that. So again, that is a, a one-off that will impact the entire project um, by a decent amount of time. Yeah, if we want to have a, another workshop, the intent was from this point forward, based on the feedback that we had received, to go to the public hearing, have a special public hearing, um, have a first reading, and then a special public hearing on the entire L U B. So again, I, I think that.
Cause that will part.
Okay, thank you. I just don't want to be making a bunch of motions to change the wording at second reading. That's why I thought committee would be better, but we'll figure that out. Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
So we'll highlight zero lot lines and anything in the downtown. Next time, L U B's in front of you. Any more? Good. No more questions? Natalie, you're good?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, awesome. I need a motion to receive this as information.
I could, if I could find it.
I got it. It's on the. That, that the agenda report dated January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, entitled DARP prioritization, be received for information.
You going somewhere, what?
Sitting for four days.
That passes, Natalie, you're good?
Yeah.
Uh, that's unanimous.
What comments?
I took a break, but I'm sure everyone else might need a break, so we'll take ten minutes and then we'll get into um, our next agenda topic.
Welcome back.
Here's the card.
I'm there.
How are you?
Natalie's online.
Yes, Natalie's with us online.
I gave you a backhanded swipe today.
Who, me or David?
Oh yeah.
Great, yeah.
We were having trouble with Marta's computer.
I need a motion.
That might have been yours.
Motion going camera.
That's standing.
Yes. Sorry. Want it, Mike?
That's standing committee of the whole moving camera to discuss the matter pursuant to section twenty four one A advice from officials in section twenty seven one A privileged information of the freedom of information and privacy act.
Let me do it now. Okay, saying it, okay, all right.
Yeah, that's all right, Mary, we did plan it.
So that's absolutely fine. I just noticed motions have to get read in, but we can do it after the camera. Okay, I don't have a card, but I'm in favor. Okay. Camera. So you guys, so you guys are, I don't need to do this. Oh, I just need to do for this council evaluation.
Putting his finger up. Putting his finger up. I think we're guessing what the speed I know is.
No, we have to go into breakout rooms.
Are we playing out of camera? Or can we just kill the session right now?
We have to come on camera just to do the notices and motions.
Yes.
Breaker. Okay, yep.
One one thousand, two one thousand, four one thousand.
You don't have to. You don't have to, no.
Barb, swing in. Ryan Stoll. Nope.
That's the only one that we have to read this sheet.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'll read in the notice of motion that I gave this week. The transit operation contracts, the provision of third-party transit driving services is terminated. An effective date of termination no later than August 1st, 2024. These services are brought in-house and their projected savings, if any, are applied to the Twin Coor tax base.
Do you have one?
Yes, that the council code of conduct by law thirty eight slash twenty seventeen be amended to delete section twenty five, which requires council members' attendance at meetings and official events be recorded and reported quarterly on the city web. Yep. During the November one committee, the whole budget, it was noted that the household wastewater rates are charged based on eighty percent of the water used, but are charged at a higher rate to account for the city paying wastewater treatment on a hundred percent of the water provided by EPCOR. It was noted that this was established for optics and public perception. These advise, if this is correct, charging a lower rate for a hundred percent versus eighty percent of water used would be more straightforward approach. And if there are any implications to make this change, information would be helpful to draft a notice of motion.
Anyone else have anything that we have not sent in? Okay, we're good. Let's break till twelve thirty. As I said, I have a one o'clock meeting, so I'll be out of here at one or twelve fifty. But if we're not done, you guys can carry on without me.